Are not aware of that lends to your ability to successfully serve on our city council.
All right, so again, my name's Chris Cummings. You know, thank you guys for coming out. I'll just jump right in. So, one thing about me that I don't think people know. I mean, I've been pretty, it's a hard question because I've been pretty open about who I am and what I've struggled with in my life. I think, you know, something I don't talk about a lot is like, I'm somebody with autism. Like, I live on the autism spectrum and it really shapes who I am and how I interact with the world. And I think, you know, it's kind of a double edged sword. Sometimes it's a social struggle, but other times it's kind of a superpower when I'm trying to analyze information or put research together. And so I think, like, I mean, the whole reason I'm running is to try to bring something different to the table. And I think that is something unique about me that not only gives me something special to bring, but I think also can help me be a role model to other people.
Thank you. My name is Mark Flora. I currently serve on the city council. One thing I think most people probably in Ketchikan don't know about me is that many years ago in my youth, I achieved a first degree black belt in taekwondo. And then I spent a year as an instructor. So, how would that help me to serve on the city council? It helps, not from a violence perspective. It's useful for serving on the city council because a journey through martial arts, anybody who's been a practitioner knows that it's a physical and mental journey into the recesses of your mind. And it's given me perspective into myself as well as a high level of discipline and determination to get things done. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jamie King and I'm running for the three year seat for city council. So, I grew up here in Ketchikan and I graduated from K High. I had a large group of friends. I loved going to school and I enlisted in the Navy. And in the Navy, I was no longer special. And I was with people who maybe were not as academically smart as I was, but they were gifted in the expertise that they had. It was a real voyage because it made me appreciate that everybody's voice needs to be heard and that they all have specific perspectives. And that even though I could have great ideas, my idea could not be the most precious thing in the room. It had to be a collaborative effort and you have to listen to what other people have to say, even if it feels hurtful to you. To keep going through that and make sure that your end result is what's being served, not your ego.
Good afternoon. My name is Jack Finnegan. I'm running for the one year seat on the city council. When I was 19 years of age, I dropped out of college. I went to a small liberal arts school right out of high school and found that I had not broadened my horizons from the small Midwestern town I'd grown up in. I'd found myself in another small Midwestern town. I wanted to kind of explore the world a little bit. So, I dropped out of school. I spent 11 years kind of adventuring. And after 11 years of adventuring, I re-enrolled in school and I earned a BA in philosophy, which is actually a little bit less unknown now. It's part of my statement to the Ketchikan Daily News. The candidate statements were printed this morning. But what I gained from studying philosophy is exactly what I sought, which was an improvement in my critical thinking skills, which is how I think it'll serve me very well. Serves me very well in my life and will serve me very well on the city council. Studying philosophy challenges you to examine the assumptions that you make, to entertain arguments that you might not find immediately agreeable. And I think having that skill set with a seat on the city council will make me an engaged council member. Thank you.
Hi, Lala Kistler. I am currently on the city council. I was appointed last year after losing by 36 votes. What a lot of people wouldn't necessarily know is I've been married come November, 40 years. So, I know how to compromise. I know how to see other people's opinions and respect other people's opinions and live my life and be okay with them having a different opinion. And I think that's very helpful on the city council.
Good afternoon. Kevin Kristovich. I'm running for a three year seat on the city council. Lived here my whole life, raising a family here, my grandkids, my dog. I grew up listening to a lot of older people getting advice, taking in what they say. And I still do. And people ask me for advice a lot of times. And sometimes it's not always the best advice, but a lot of my ideas and opinions I share alike with people in the city. And upon encouragement of people in Ketchikan, I've decided to take a run for city council. I don't travel. I stay home a lot, so I'm readily available pretty much seven days a week, 24 hours a day. So, I'm willing to listen to the concerns, the complaints, the comments. And if there's issues that can be taken to the table and find a resolution for problems, I'll give it my best effort. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Dion Booth. I am also running for a three year seat on the Ketchikan City Council. I was born and raised here. One thing that most people probably wouldn't know, I guess, is I served a term on the Ketchikan Youth Soccer League Board of Directors. And how that would help me is, as you might imagine, managing over 100 children and trying to figure out where they all fit in on their different teams. One thing we had to do on that board was we had to rank every single one of these kids and try to balance dozens and dozens of teams. And this isn't just Johnny's the fastest or Mary's the smartest. You have to really know all of these kids, their strengths and weaknesses, their communication skills. You, you know, you can imagine doing that is a lot like this, on a smaller scale, the city of Ketchikan. I'd like to get to know everybody in the community. I'd like to hear their input. I'd like to know their strengths and weaknesses and use my pastime on the KY cell board and apply that at the Ketchikan City Council level.
The next set of questions is going to be a minute and 30 seconds long and we are going to begin with Mark. What do you see as some of the near term goals for the city manager once she has settled in?
Mark Flora. Once the new manager has settled into the job, she's going to be faced with a ton of challenges. And I think the near term priorities that she needs to wrap her head around, I'll focus on two because these two will influence the outcomes of all the others, and that's people and revenue. People from the perspective of that, the city is faced with a lot of recent retirements. There's more pending retirements. We've lost a few people to other municipalities or private sector jobs. And revenue is an ongoing and forever challenge to municipality. There's never enough to get done what we need to. So, once Ms. Walsh has been at her desk for a while and she is more comfortable and understands the many challenges and priorities facing our town, I hope that we take a very hard look at succession planning and find a way to fill those vacancies to carry out the mission of the community, whether it be public safety or the port or infrastructure. There's a lot that's going to be coming at her and it's going to start, like I said, with people and revenue. Thank you.
Jamie King, I think that Mark Flora put it beautifully. Revenue and people will be the closest challenges that a new director will have to face. She'll have to get to know all of her department heads and be able to mesh them together effectively as well as help those departments start to run in a firm direction with a financially viable budget that we will, you know, hopefully if I get elected, but whoever's on the city council will be helping to create and approve. All of those monies and asks are already in the works. They are all, all those plans are already laid. It will be about maneuvering those plans to be sustainable and about those department heads in the future growing and revitalizing those departments so that they can perform well.
Jack Finnegan, running for a one year seat. One of the challenges that I know I'll be facing if I'm seated on the council is just absorbing the massive amount of information, getting a sense of the detail, the different departments, how they interact. I can't imagine how much more will be on the plate for the city manager when she assumes her role. And in attendance at the, I believe it was the September 15th meeting, the acting city manager spoke to the challenge that we have right now in retaining personnel, partly because wages are so much more competitive in the private sector. And I think focusing on finding ways to make city employment positions more attractive so that we can have better retention, so that we see, I mean, Mark addressed the issue with impending retirements, so we can fill some of the gaps that are in place and hold on to the people that we fill those gaps with, I think will be incredibly important to keeping all departments in the city operating smoothly.
Yeah, you got that right. Just learning everything that's going on. She's been watching our city council meetings, so she's kind of keeping up and she's been keeping contact with the current acting city manager so that when she has questions about things, that they're getting cleared up so that when she starts on Friday, she can have an idea really of what she's getting into. She is a very dynamic person. I was struck with her from her very first video that we were able to watch. The city council actually was the committee to hire the city manager. It was a real eye opener for me because as a new city council member, I really was still treading water at the time, trying to figure out exactly what my position was and what I could do and what I couldn't do and things like that. It was a very, she's very dynamic. She's, I think she's going to put us on the right track, working towards a forward thinking strategy. And her ideas about growing within, training the people under to be leaders is real exciting. And I think she'll be working towards that, which we really need.
Could you ask the question one more time, please?
What do you see as some of the near term goals for the city manager once she has settled in?
Well, one thing that I would like to see is how financially stable is the city right now? How much money was used from the reserves during COVID? What can be done to recover those funds without raising taxes? Sure, she's got a lot of things on her plate. Probably not as much as what we're looking at right now, but it would have to get to meet her, ask her some questions, see what's on her mind for a plan of attack and go from there.
Dion Booth, going for a three year seat on Ketchikan City Council. So, I think near term goals that she should have for herself is probably the budget and the staff, which really tie really hand in hand together. So, just like I was saying about being on the board of directors for Ketchikan Youth Soccer League, what really helps is getting to know every one of those kids. And in her position, what I think would really help is getting to know every one of the city staff. It's going to be hard because I think there's something like 24 departments. But if you get to know every single person underneath you, you're going to understand how it works, where people should be, how it's going to work most efficiently if they are in the spot that works best for them. Thank you.
All right. Hey, Chris Cummings here. So, as I see it, the city manager is, you know, like the CEO of our community. And so, I think there's two main focuses. There's like the administrative side of the job and then the city manager also kind of like a figurehead for our community and a representative. Yeah, anyway, so I think on the administrative side of the house, it sounds like it's all about personnel. I mean, we've had some really high level jobs sit vacant for years now. And when you don't have leaders in place, like the rest of that organization suffers. People aren't getting developed. People aren't growing when they don't have somebody there to guide them. And then on the other side, the kind of more future oriented side of the job, I think diversification of our economy is, I mean, that's like where it's at. Like, I think COVID showed us what happens when we are over reliant on a single industry to fund our basic services. And so, I think, you know, bringing it, as somebody who's not from our community, bringing in an outsider's perspective can help us problem solve creatively. And I think that's something to maximize on.
For a minute and 30 seconds, starting with Jamie. If the CLIA agrees to an agreement to give the city the ability to use CPV funds for upgrading the port and other infrastructure, what would be your priorities and why? Or do you oppose this possibility and why?
Jamie King. I, again, everybody can use more money. And if we can negotiate for more money, that might be a great option depending on what those strings would be. I think that addressing some of our deferred maintenance as they apply to the ports and harbors would be a top priority. We have aging infrastructure and I know that there's a lot of infrastructure money out there. But putting that extra money toward things that really tie in to ports and harbors, they are their own unique capsulated entity. But facilitating that revitalization from the ports out would be really impactful. And if we can have money to serve both of those masters, that would be like a genie in a bottle, right?
Jack Finnegan, running for one year seat. This is, you know, it's an interesting question. And at a recent city council meeting, Charlie Ball, the current chairman of CLIA Alaska, gave a presentation to the council and spoke about wanting to build a more amenable relationship with municipal government, which I found incredibly encouraging. And I know that recent agreements made for the city of Juneau have opened up the opportunity for, is it a convention center? Is the nature of the, is how some of those monies are going to be spent, at least in Juneau? I think in Ketchikan, we have the new and still developing challenge of figuring out how to integrate with the Ward Cove, the dock at Ward Cove. And I don't know if we'd want to address issues relating to traffic congestion, road repair. These are all considerations. Or if there's some better way that we can, I don't know, smoothen out some of the wrinkles that have developed by virtue of all the added traffic, the additional bodies coming to and from Ward Cove. That's something that I'd want to look at.
Lala Kistler. I'm very excited about the possibility of getting more funding from CLIA. I was ready to be a little combative at the last meeting and demanding that they pay more because it's just ridiculous. We should be able to support the docks from the funding from the cruise ships, period. And so, it looks like that's now going to happen. Very excited. They're going to be, they're talking about pitching in for the parts of grants that we won't, that we would have to spend, that we frankly don't have the money. We don't have the money to do these things. And they're realizing that. And I think the mess with transportation from Ward Cove has shown them that Ketchikan, downtown Ketchikan, is a destination in itself. And we now have bargaining room because they are at that realization. And I think that's why they've come to the table. It's very exciting. I was in for electricity on the docks before and everyone said, "No, no, no." Well, it's now a possibility. I approached them with it. They came back and said they're interested. They'll help to repair the docks, add on to berth three. So, it's very exciting. Our budget can really use this.
Kevin Kristovich. This is kind of scary with me about an outside entity coming in and offering an unknown amount of money, the determination of what the money's to be used for. What are we losing if we fall for this deal? Are we going to lose ownership? Do we have any say in what we need? Our roads are in much need of repair. You have a lot of these tour operators using our city, our residential roads, running tours. And the roads are getting in worse shape more and more all the time. So, if they could maybe put a provision in, if they're offering an incentive package of what the money's to be used for, we could probably put in there to fix some of our roads that these tour operators use. Park Avenue is one. If not, if there's a way to, one solution for revenue is a seasonal road tax on tour operators using our city streets. So, before we jump off and grab this idea, I would want to ask some more questions and get some more thorough answers. Thank you.
Dion Booth, a three year seat. So, one thing that I really have been trying to focus on hard on my campaign is the people that have felt like they've not been heard or have been too scared to go up to the council and speak. And every time, you know, my coworkers or anyone have heard and usually pretty surprised to hear that I'm running for a seat on the city council, they're saying, "Well, man, why don't you do something about the streets?" And that is the thing I hear over and over and over. We've had work done downtown over and over and over. We had the sidewalk expansion. We always have money put into down there. But what about, what about outside that boundary? You know, they, these are, there are a lot of roads that they're using that we use year round that are hurting our cars. So, I think prioritization of street maintenance and redoing roads and such, I think that would be a big priority to use this money for. That's what I've heard from the people, anyway. Thank you.
All right, this is Chris Cummings again. I've, you know, this relationship, the way this relationship is set up has always really rubbed me the wrong way. I mean, ever since the cruise lines took Juneau and essentially southeast to court. I don't know. I think that is, that actions speak louder than words. And, you know, they can talk about being conciliatory and, but it's like, you know, put your money where your mouth is. I think that this arrangement needs to be restructured to give us more discretion over how to spend this money. I mean, this industry kind of almost has a stranglehold on us. And, you know, that just isn't fair. This industry has a, it brings a lot, but it also has a significant impact on our community that the industry isn't compensating us for. And if something's impacting our quality of life like that, something needs to give, something needs to change. And so, I think another, another solution, instead of being like counting on this money, is to come up with creative ways to extract more revenue from this industry. Like, I've heard it kind of hinted at. I'm a strong proponent of a bus tax. Like, that's easy money right there for the taking. I also think maybe there's opportunities to look at repealing the cap on sales tax to capture, you know, some of those. Like, I mean, I don't, I don't even know if we have an idea of like, what is generated from jewelry stores? Like purchases over that amount, how much money we're losing. So, yeah, more creative problem solving.
Mark Flora, running for a three year seat. I've been advocating for years for more financial independence of the use of port revenues. The port of Ketchikan is owned by every city resident equally. It's a community asset that should provide community benefit for everyone. So, what specifically could we do? Mr. Ball from CLIA did say that he wants to recast the relationship. Well, I think quite frankly, that's long overdue. I don't think any of us know quite yet where that will go, but here's a few places where I think we could put some focus. So, berth three needs some improvements. The dock design is done. We've taken some actions this year. We have a little more than half of the funds ready for that. We don't have the rest. The industry wants to see berth three completed so it can accommodate bigger ships. I think they need to pipe in and get the other half to us. We need 15 to 20 million dollars of cathodic protection on berths one and two. We don't have the money. Even if COVID had not occurred, we would not have had the money to do it all ourselves. Also, I do believe there should be a direct path from the port to the general fund that all the parties can agree upon. And then, once that money's in the general fund, it needs to be up to the community and not the cruise lines with how those funds are utilized. The locals here in town, we know what we need and I think we can handle our affairs just fine. We just need an improved revenue source in order to take some of the burden off of locals. Thank you.
For a minute and 30 seconds, beginning with Jack this time. The city has been experiencing employee retention issues based on the pay grades currently offered. For example, the acting city manager informed city council at a recent meeting that there exists the possibility that solid waste may be reduced to only one CDL qualified driver, which would severely affect solid waste pickup efficiency. What would be your plan to better retain employees in a tight budget situation?
Thank you. Jack Finnegan, running for a one year seat. This actually dovetails with my answer to the previous question, talking about having heard the then acting city manager describe this problem. And do I have a solution to that problem? No, I don't. And this is one of the challenges that I will be facing as a first time seated member of the council, should I be elected, is that I really don't know just yet what kind of wiggle room we have. I don't know what kind of mechanisms or tools might be available to me as a member of the council to increase the retention of city staff members or to increase the offerings that we can make to prospective staff members. So, that'll be part of the legwork that I'll have to do, should I be elected, figuring out what kind of tools might be available to us to retain the staff that we have and to attract new staff to our city.
Lala Kistler. There is actually a process that we will be addressing again after the, we were waiting until the new city manager came to address the situation and we just realized at the last meeting that, ooh, maybe that was a mistake. And we heard about the solid waste issues, about not having enough drivers potentially. Hopefully, they can hang on with the positive news that the council was obviously worried about the situation. Basically, the city manager only has a certain amount of leverage, ability to offer a raise to someone. So, if you're about to lose someone because they're going somewhere else, because they can get a better deal somewhere else, then there's nothing they can do. It has to come to the city council if it goes above a certain pay grade. And that is not efficient. And so, the city manager needs to have the ability to make those discretionary choices and that is coming. Budget wise, I mean, that's why we raised taxes. It was terrible. It was awful. It was excruciating. But we had to do it because we're losing, we're hemorrhaging employees, as everyone in the entire nation is. It's not an unusual thing. But, yeah, the revenue, the possibility of getting the money from the ships coming in to be able to go into the general fund that is the streets and things like that.
Can you read the question again, please?
The city has been experiencing employee retention issues based on the pay rates that are offered on samples. The acting city manager informed city council at a recent meeting that there exists the possibility that solid waste may be reduced to only one CDL qualified driver, which severely affects solid waste pickup efficiency. What would be your plan to better retain employees in a tight budget situation?
So, the solid waste situation, they're just, your question is involving just one CDL driver per truck?
It's mostly, what would your plan be to better retain employees in a tight budget situation?
Well, you have to look at the budget, for one. There's been Well, you have to look at the budget for one. There's been instances where I talked to a retired ferry worker and he said that they had some budget issues, what have you. And they elected to take a pay freeze for, I believe it was a year or so, maybe a little longer. And they weathered it out. And then once they got through their little financial situation, they got a slight pay grade increase. It's hard to keep people. I mean, people aren't wanting to go to work. Then there's people that are working. If, I don't have an answer for that. If people are willing to just ride it out and you live here, you're raising your family, you have a home, you're paying taxes already. And if you're living comfortable at the present moment, you know, if they would, if they could take a pay freeze for a while until the city rebounds back. I don't know how much money the city spent during COVID out of the reserves. So without looking at numbers, I can't really give a definite answer. So thank you.
Dion Booth, for a three-year seat on the city council. So as far as retention goes, we are a city manager strong government. Like Lalette said, maybe we should be a little bit city manager stronger. She should have the power to give a raise when necessary. If we're losing employees, that is so much X amount of dollars per employee a year that is retiring. If we could implement some sort of training program to make the employees we do have more qualified, then we can give them the raise that they deserve. And like I said, or Lalette said, that we can put that, hopefully put that power in the city manager's hands. As far as getting new employees, I think the city needs to advertise, advertise, advertise. They get, I saw one advertisement recently in the newspaper where the position was a city job. I don't remember which one it was, but there was over 30 paid days off. That is awesome. That is great benefits. The city offers really great benefits. And I can only imagine you'd have to get a significant pay raise from somewhere else to forego these benefits if you were to leave. So if we can find a way to better qualify the employees we have so we can justify giving them raises and then advertise how great it is to work for the city, then maybe we can also get more qualified applicants as well. Thank you.
All right, Chris Cummings again. I think when it comes to retention, at the end of the day, most of the time, it's all about the money, right? And so in a budget situation like this, that's where revenue, new revenue streams come in. I mean, that's payroll is, I mean, it's the hugest chunk of our city budget is payroll. And so, you know, if we talk about cuts, we're talking about jobs, real people. And so I think another part of this too, a more long-term solution is to figure out how to solve our brain drain. I mean, we are, we have great kids here. We do a good job teaching them. We should, we, we should be able to develop our own talent, to grow our own city managers and port directors and fire chiefs and police chiefs. We have that, but somewhere there's a disconnect, you know, our brightest students are going south for college and never coming back because they don't, the opportunities are here, but we're not connecting them with, with them. And so, yeah, I think, you know, the city alone can't solve that. But I think talking about it and bringing it to people's attention, we can work together to solve, keep our kids here.
Mark Flora, running for a three-year seat. The agenda item before the council to give the manager more latitude in hiring and retaining employees was brought forward by me. Having a business background and served on the city council has been a real Jekyll and Hyde experience. In business, you can make decisions quickly. You're nimble. They may not be good decisions, but they happen quick. You suffer the consequences. It's either a good decision or a bad decision. You course correct or you celebrate the good move. Municipalities don't work like that. It's, it's a municipal environment. You have a city management structure. You have a deliberative body of seven people plus a mayor. Things don't move quickly. In this environment where labor is very scarce, I thought it prudent that the manager have the latitude to hire new people quickly. That got deferred. It'll come up, I think, at the next meeting. Another thing we need to do is we need to grow our own. We need apprenticeship programs. We need to get folks into the jobs at the municipality when they're young, keep our young people at home, and give them the opportunity to be vested in their careers. They're more likely to hang out. Everybody wants to make a good living, but a successful career or somebody who's happy in the workplace, it's always more than about just the money. So what can we do to cultivate a good work environment and give our young people the skills to succeed on an ever upward trajectory through whatever department they find themselves in? And in the end, it, like in the beginning, comes down to people and money. We have to find a way to fund it. Thank you.
Jamie King. I think that this issue is not about benefits. It's about pay. And it's about the ability to move up. Some people have been working at the city and they're happy in their jobs, but some people have wanted to move up and that succession planning was not in place. And when they saw opportunities elsewhere, they moved. The cost of living has gone up dramatically. And if you're going to pay like it's 1990, you are going to lose people. We do have to have more benefits for our city employees, and that can be done in a variety of ways. Giving the city manager more leeway to adjust pay within bands would be a great quality. And of course, growing our own talent would be lovely too, but also attracting talent from elsewhere. We try to do good recruiting campaigns. I think those could be more robust. But also just revitalizing what it is to work in the city. We lost a lot of old guard, and it can be a good time to make this a new dynamic workplace and really help people love working for the city or rediscover their love for working for the city. The trash is a separate issue, right? But also, I know that a lot of people are hurting for CDLs here in the city. And that's about qualifications, being able to obtain them.
A minute and 30 seconds, beginning with Lalette. Speaking of tight budgets, the city council voted in 2022 to hold tax rates steady. What ideas do you have to alleviate the budget stressors as it pertains to the tax rate? Would you raise taxes, cut budgets? Please elaborate.
So Lalette Kissler, that's pertaining to the property tax. I was actually the only one that voted on that. It was in the budget that we were going to pass that property tax increase. So I, I do like the idea of sales tax because when you purchase something, it is your choice to purchase that thing, especially for a retired person in town. If you raise their property taxes, you know, it makes a big difference to them. But, you know, you can maybe be more economical with what you're purchasing for sales tax. I, I mean, we did increase the sales tax on a seasonal basis. I am in favor of increasing the caps. I think it's, makes the most sense. Right now, the people that are needy at lower incomes are paying 100% tax on everything they purchase, when they are the least likely to be able to afford those taxes. I think people at the upper ends can afford to pay some more taxes and not have it all be on the lower income people. The renter cap, I think is upside down. You should be having the break at the bottom of the rent, not the top. It's the people at the bottom that need a break. People that are paying less than $1,000 in rent are paying 100% of the sales tax.
Kevin Kristovich. I'm not a big fan of taxes being raised, the sales tax issue. I don't have an answer for it right now or a solution. So I just have to, one idea is a rental cap, like Lalette just said. There's people that have been financially squeezed out of their residences because of increased rent. You have people on fixed income, social security, can't afford to pay more rent. So they're basically out of a place to live. One lady in town mentioned this to me, and she said, I spent my whole life raising my kids to get away with them, get away from them. And now I'm moving back in with them because she can't afford to go anywhere else. And that's pretty sad. So we need to find a solution to this. If we can, if the city could impose a tax, a cap where people can afford to live in Ketchikan and feel good about living here instead of always having a bad taste in their mouth about taxes, taxes being increased. I mean, nobody wants it. Nobody likes it. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of raising taxes. Thank you.
Dion Booth, running for a three-year seat on the Ketchikan City Council. So I was actually at that meeting. I was the only person to stand up and talk about the property tax raise. I begged the council not to do it. They still discussed it for quite a while, but they didn't do it thankfully. I, I don't think that we should ever raise property tax. I've never, ever heard of taxes going down once they've gone up, even in a surplus. I've never heard of that. Maybe I'm wrong. But that, you know, that's just going to go right to the landlords who aren't going to feel it in their pocket because they're going to push the rent right up. And that's going to make the housing problem that we are already facing much worse. We need to get creative with revenue. I, you know, some people who are based their life off of tourism and, and the downtown aren't going to like this. But we need to try to get as much money as possible for not, from non-locals. The way a municipality like the city of Ketchikan gets their money is service fees, fines, charges, and assets. If we can together, seven heads on the council, talk about how we can focus these service fees, fines, charges, and assets in the downtown area, I think we can pull a lot of more money out from people who aren't here year round, who are just here for a couple of months using the best of the best of what we have in Ketchikan in the summertime. Thank you.
Hey, Chris Cummings again. I think Dion hit it, hit it on the head. I feel like property tax increases should be a measure of last resort if, after all of our other avenues have been exhausted. Because like you said, they get passed on to the renters who can least afford it. They get passed on to homeowners who might be skating on thin ice to making their mortgage payments each month. And, you know, like Lalette said, I favor the rental, the rental tax is messed up. Like I, I pay $900 a month in rent and another 6% on top of that. And it's backwards. I mean, that's, that's, sales tax in general is incredibly regressive, and that's like hitting people right in the wallet. So I would favor an immediate repeal of the caps on, I mean, sales tax caps in general. I've never really understood the rationale for, for the caps in the first place. And so, yeah, I, I don't know. I think creative problem solving again is the solution. Capturing more revenue from the cruise lines is the solution from the industry in general. And we should just, to the extent we can, try to keep the burden off of us when we have a little bit of a cash cow, bring in outside dollars in six months out of the year.
Mark Flora, I'm running for a three-year seat. In the six years that I've been serving on the city council, I've served with a variety of different people. And I can say there hasn't been any time where anybody wanted to raise a tax or a fee. Nobody's excited about it. Everybody understands the impacts to our, to our households. And I think, for the most part, historically, the Ketchikan City Council has done a pretty good job. There's been no property tax increase for 10 years. There has been a recent sales tax increase, first one, 10 years, and it averages out to a quarter of 1%. So while not pleasant, as a measure of last resort, sometimes that's where you have to go. So how do we avoid that? Well, first you look at budget cuts. You should always look, where can you save money first? But I believe that the city's budget is actually pretty lean. For all of the cuts we made last year to the general government budget to maintain services and personnel, we cut a little less than 1% of the total general government budget. That's not, that's not the solution. So always look for cuts first, always apply taxes last, and in the interim, leverage what you have for opportunities. Let's get more money from visitors so we can have less burden on locals. Let's lobby at the state and federal levels for as much of that infrastructure money as we can get. And I heard at Southeast Conference and the homeless assessment, you know, right now, the, the grant environment appears to be the most attractive it's been in quite some time, and we should aggressively pursue grants. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question? Speaking of tight budgets, the city council voted in 2022 to hold tax rates steady. What ideas do you have to alleviate the budget stressors as it pertains to the tax rate? Would you raise taxes, cut budgets?
I think that everybody would like to do creative funding first and taxes last. I think that's a pretty unanimous decision. I feel like taxes could be season, the caps could go up. It could be seasonally varied. Exceptions could be made for construction and lower sides of rent. There are a lot of creative decisions. I think that also that would have to be collaborated with not only on the council, but with our financial staff and looking at the actual numbers that are actually there and trying to see what kinds of adjustments, what kind of revenue that would really result in. I really like the idea of getting some of those infrastructure grants and putting in for it because some of those are not just about roads and bridges. They're about training. They're about growing our different forms of revenue, especially as it pertains to jobs and revenue creation. Thank you.
Jack Finnigan, running for a one-year seat on the Ketchikan City Council. A lot of this territory has been covered by the other candidates here at the table. And I think Mark has spoken pretty eloquently to the fact that there's very little room to cut in the budget. I don't think there's really an appetite or, or any room for a cut to the city's budget right now. So it comes down to generating new or additional revenue. We've talked, a few folks have made mention of some, you know, either shifting or eliminating the, the cap on the sales tax. That's something that should be examined. I think it was, maybe it was Chris mentioned earlier, the possibility of a tax on the buses, the coaches that come through town during the cruise ship season. Might be a possible stream of revenue. Outside sources, state, state grants, federal grants, I think, should be pursued. And I know that's a time consuming endeavor. But if those resources are available, we should be looking for them. I also wonder too about whether there might be any room to generate additional revenue with a lot of the short-term rentals that we have in town, VRBOs, Airbnbs. Those, I think, probably generate most of their revenue during the peak of the season. We talk about earning a little bit more money from the folks who are visiting here every year, and that might be one of those places where we can do that. Thank you.
Okay, for one minute and 30 seconds, beginning with Dion. Recently, the city, through grant funding, was able to construct a 24/7 homeless shelter on Park Avenue. How do you plan to address the issue of continued needs for homeless services in the city of Ketchikan? Actually, I think, beginning with Kevin, I might have messed it up.
Thank you, Kevin Kristovich. The homeless issue is a growing concern in Ketchikan. There is a much needed newer facility to handle the number of people that use these services. And so does the city have a piece of property to contribute to this project if there's funding for a new facility for the homeless? If there's funding for a new facility for the homeless is the question I have. If so, it would be nice to have an in-kind donation of a piece of property if the PATH organization have the funding to construct the facility. I think that would be a good, good scenario. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Brittany, could you repeat that, please?
Recently, the city, through grant funding, was able to construct a 24/7 homeless shelter on Park Avenue. How do you plan to address the issue of continued needs for homeless services in the city of Ketchikan?
Well, I had Dion Booth for a three-year seat on the Ketchikan City Council. I had the privilege the other night to go to a nonprofit forum with everyone at this table with me, and that was a good time. And I think the first thing we would do is continue their funding. We need to prioritize, you know, obviously, the hope would be to give all the nonprofits the money they ask for in their application. But as far as the homeless issue goes, I think we can all agree that it is a little more prevalent than some having fun in the wintertime. So if we can continue funding through grants, PATH, and the, all the different nonprofits that pick up the slack that we as a municipality cannot, I think that would be a big step is just keep giving them what they're asking for. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna talk, Chris Cummings, I'm gonna talk pretty fast because I've got a lot to say, I did a lot of work trying to prepare for questions like this. Honestly, the answers are right here. Wish sponsored a homeless, Ketchikan homelessness assessment a couple of years, no, yeah, two years ago. And when I come across this document, it was really, really, really eye-opening. Most people who have been homeless are longtime Ketchikan residents, they've been here on average over 21, 20 years. They, 48% of them are native. So I think that speaks to the generational trauma we're still trying to address. Most of the, it's a chronic problem. Most people who are living on the streets have been homeless without a home for more than three years. And I think, I think it's important to mention, mention, one of the leading causes of homelessness is trying to flee domestic violence. And so, supporting that, continuing to support the efforts of Wish. And like the one fact that really just blew my mind that I wouldn't have known, realized ever was that 56% of the people they surveyed went through foster care. And so if you want to know a major source of this problem, it's that we're taking the most vulnerable, vulnerable kids out of their, an already dangerous situation. And I, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to like denigrate the work that foster parents do, but there's clearly some gaps in the program. And I, I think a lot of it is af, ah, afterward, aftercare stuff, or wraparound stuff.
Mark Flora, I'm running for a three-year seat on the Ketchikan City Council. These types of issues in our town are handled by the nonprofits, and the city council's support is through grants. There's a formula for that, it's 3.24% of the city sales tax revenue is the grant budget. That was about $315,000 last year. That's not a lot of money. That's just not a lot of money. So what could we do? Well, maybe, and, and as you can see, all of these topics kind of are a connection of dots. Well, maybe we could reach out to our cruise line partners, start small with them, and start to build this relationship and go, you know, $315,000 isn't that much money. You want to match it? We've just managed to double the, the grant budget. Can it happen? I don't know. Is it a question worth asking? I believe it is. I think the single biggest step we can take is to take another run at granting the old hospital lot at the end of Park Avenue there on Boden for the PATH shelter. We tried, quite frankly, I believe the city council did not help this along because we ended up removing that lot named specifically as the asset for the grant application. And I believe that did not, I believe that might have been a contributor to that grant not actually happening. So if we can help PATH get that piece of property and a grant to construct a new building, I think that would go a long way in this community to addressing the homeless problem. Thank you.
I am a great supporter of the nonprofits, and I think that it is, as a municipality, part of our responsibility to help those support networks. I think that suggesting land and maybe, as Mr. Kristovich said, looking at being able to match or deed land for them to take some of the funding that they're given by us to have federal and state grants to augment that can be really impactful. I think that we have to focus on our community safety nets as far as our funding. I think that homelessness, as Chris pointed out, is a multi-layered problem. And a lot of it is, I think that the foster care system, that that doesn't point necessarily to bad foster care, it points to when you get out of foster care, if you don't have a family, if your family is not functional, you don't have a support network. And so I think that that dovetails into better jobs and growing our community so that when people do become adults, they can become adults who get jobs, get houses, are productive. I think that that is the purpose of augmenting the nonprofits with municipal funds and whatever capacity we can do that.
Jack Vennigan, running for one-year seat on the Ketchikan City Council. These are, issues around homelessness are incredibly complex, and they're not limited to any one source, to any one simple reason. And Mark addressed the fact that as a, as a governing body, the city council is pretty limited in what we can do directly for these individuals. The folks who are working with those individuals, the staff and the volunteers for the nonprofits that are working with them directly, I think deserve as much of our encouragement and support as possible, both in person and financially through the grant process. We met, we, the candidates at this table met with some of the students in the government classes at Ketchikan High School last night, and these kids are incredibly clear-eyed about the fact that this is not a problem that's gonna be solved, it's not going to go away. We need to do the best we can to support these people who are either down on their luck for a brief period of time or for an extended period of time. But I think building good coalition between the nonprofits that are addressing these individuals' needs is a, is a good, is a good step. And I think looking at other like-sized cities to see solutions that they have found that we might be able to apply here in Ketchikan, might be a way for us to look a little bit beyond our immediate borders for other possible solutions to mitigate some of the struggles that are brought on by these vulnerable members of our community.
Lala Kistler, I am 100% in favor of helping PATH get a building. I think that's going to be a big help. What's proposed, what a lot of people don't know is there are two different homeless shelters. One's clean and sober, that's the PATH, and the other one is we take everyone. I mean, everyone needs to have a dry place to sleep. That's the one that just got the new building, the one that takes all. PATH is currently in, something that was built in the 30s and is partially condemned. It's very depressing, and Ty Recky is a hero for what he's doing there. It is amazing, his devotion to this cause. What the new facility would be, would be, would have some social services also connected to it so the people would have help to get out of where they are, and some transitional housing, so they can get used to living on their own. I mean, when you live in a family environment with, which a homeless shelter is, going out on your own can be really scary. So that transitional housing, I think it's very important to get people back in a job and be productive members of society. I also think a detox center would help a lot. There's a lot of homeless that are not counted because they're floating on people's couches because they are addicted and they can't see life in a normal way, so.
For a minute and 30 seconds, we invite you to have a closing statement, which clearly illustrates your goals as a candidate and what makes you different from other candidates, beginning with Dion.
Dion Booth, for a three-year seat on the Ketchikan City Council. So I really started paying attention and getting involved, and the very first time I thought about running was two years ago on September 23rd. It was in the middle of the port issue and talking about maybe managing or leasing out the management for it. Four of the council members voted to go into an executive session when further discussing the leasing of the management of our ports. If I'm elected, I don't know who would vote for the executive session, but I would not. I would, I would be fully supportive of full transparency. I don't think there is ever a time that the public should not be part of the process. If we're discussing something that is gonna affect 13,000 people for five years or 30 years, I think that the public should be right there, they should be recorded, and anyone should have access to that to see which council members voted what, and if that's something that they could support or agree on. So if you're for full transparency and letting the, the person who speaks and felt and feels not heard, then I'm your guy on October 4th. Thank you.
All right, hey, Chris Cummings here. I am running because, to try and bring something different, like I said in the beginning. I, you know, I've heard people say for years, I wish I had somebody different to vote for. And I think like I'm the epitome of different, I'm not the kind of person who usually does this kind of thing. And, but you know, I think I'm like a diamond in the rough underneath it all, like I've got a lot to offer. I, I, after school, like I had a mental breakdown and struggled for a year, over a decade trying to get my life back together, you know, tried to self-medicate with opiates, and that was not a great decision, didn't work out very well. But four years ago, after lots of trying, I finally got connected with the resources I need and got clean and sober. I was able to address my mental health care. And so, just trying to get priorities really quick, obviously, additional, these kind of issues are important to me. So trying, a car house has 15 beds, trying to bring additional treatment beds here to town is one priority. Another priority is a mental health treatment center. When people are in crisis and they go in the hospital suicidal or whatever, we can only help them for a couple of days before they get shipped out hundreds or thousands of miles away from family. Like I had this happen in my own family. And we, we don't, it doesn't have to be that way. We can support our people, we can take care of those of us who are hurting most, and that's economic development too. We're not only creating jobs in a facility like that, but once these people, once people get better, they, they get jobs too.
Mark Flora, running for a three-year seat. One of the hardest part of, one of the hardest parts of serving is community forums, and here's why. I don't think for most people, it's a natural state to say, I'm better than these other folks, so I'm your guy. I don't think I'm better than anybody here. I have never thought that I am indispensable or irreplaceable. What do I have to offer the community? I'm objective, I'm analytical, I study the topics, and I do the work. I play no favorites, I have no agendas, and I'm not afraid to make decisions that are not popular. In the end, after input from the community and staff and other city council and my own research, I believe it's the best direction to go. I have had the opportunity, along with other council people and staff, to be an agent of change for six years. Council people are not, are not solely responsible for the outcomes of anything. But in the time that I've served on the council, Wish has a new facility, the community has a new Tower One fire truck, we have a new subsea fiber optic cable, we've raised the port fees, we've hired a new city manager. We now have a new location for the 24-hour low barrier shelter. Change is ongoing. People come and go from the council, but it's never static. There's always gonna be change, there's always gonna be progress, and yes, we all hope that the progress would be greater and faster. But six years has taught me the fundamentals of how to function and serve in the public capacity, and I would appreciate your support one more time. Thank you.
Jamie King, I'm running for a three-year seat. This is the first time I'm running. I want to be on the city council because I see that it is a hard, sometimes combative job, and I feel like I can be a good bridge and a good team builder. I think that you need a lot of varied opinions, but you need those opinions to coalesce. I think that you need to listen to the experts that we've hired and the staff that we have, both inside the city of Ketchikan as employees and as the public in general. I don't think that I'm always the smartest person in the room, and I don't think that any idea that I have has to be the most precious and has to win at the cost of everything else. I think that the solutions are out there. I think that we can turn over rocks and find solutions and find money, and I think that every council member should be willing to do that with a fair mind and an open heart. And I think that we have a lot of that, and I would like to serve on the board to prove that I am one of those as well.
Jack Vennigan, running for a one-year seat on the Ketchikan City Council. I have, I count myself as enormously fortunate to have been in, to have been able to engage with numerous aspects of this community, which is where I own a home, building a family, building a business. When I first came here 10 years ago, it was cruise ship tourism that brought me to Ketchikan, and that's been one of the major sources of employment for me since then. I became heavily involved and remain heavily involved with the arts community here in Ketchikan, which is a huge part of our character, a big part of the culture that makes this place such an appealing place to live. I've been involved, I've either worked with or for numerous nonprofits here in town. I've worked in our education system, and I, I think because I've had this opportunity to explore, work in, and work with people in these many different aspects of what makes Ketchikan such a rich and bountiful place to live, it will serve me very well in service in a seat on the city council should I be elected. I bring to the table that set of critical thinking skills, which I mentioned in my opening statement, a real sense of empathy for the most vulnerable members of our community, and a willingness to listen even when the person I'm listening to might have beliefs that run counter to my own. I think it's critically important that we find common ground, which is, if you see my name on, on signs or bumper stickers around town, that you'll see that's the slogan of my campaign, finding common ground. I'm always looking for a way to connect to the person that I'm working with or speaking with, and I thank you for your support.
Lala Kistler, I do not envy you that are running for the one-year seat. Whew, man, you know, 10 months in, I, I'm just feeling like I kind of know what I'm doing, and having to go and run again after a year is exhausting. But I, I really want to do it. Mark asked me several months back, are you gonna run again? I'm gonna, I'm full in now. I, I'm the kind of person who doesn't like to waste knowledge. I've learned a lot in the last year. I think I'm becoming a productive member of the city council, I don't want to lose that. I stayed at State Farm for 29 years because I had a lot of knowledge and I didn't want to waste it. I have a diverse background in Ketchikan, been here for 40 years, and I was at, I did grocery tattusitas for seven and a half years. I was in the meat department where the rock slide happened. I started the deli up there. I was in insurance and finance, I sold mortgages, I sold retirement packages. I've been self-employed for 35 years, I had a construction business, I teach voice and piano lessons, I do bookkeeping. I'm in the arts, I forgot all about that. I direct the chorus, I, I'm involved with the daycare. Anyway, I have a lot of, a lot of knowledge about Ketchikan, different people, and I think that's helpful.
Kevin Kristovich, seeking a three-year seat. This is not gonna be an easy job for myself or anybody that is running. You're gonna be popular with some, you're not gonna be so popular with others, but popular with others. But it's just, there's decisions that you have to really look at, weigh at, and make your final decision. And hopefully, you're doing the right thing. To some, you will, to some, you won't. You just have to take the good with the bad, and hopefully, you end up with more good than bad. There's a lot of serious issues in Ketchikan that we need to address immediately. We need to find solutions to overcome the homeless issue, the, the housing crisis, the opioid issue that we're dealing with. Those are three major things that are on the top of my list. And try to get things done at no cost to the citizens of Ketchikan by raising taxes. I'm, like Mr. Booth said, I'm very transparent. I'm easy to get ahold of. If you got a question, stop, I'll take the time to listen to you. I'll talk to you and find if we can sign, find a solution to your problem. Thank you for your time. And I hope to see you guys at the poll on October 4th. Thank you.
Once again, I'm...
And that concludes our forum. Thank you all for attending.